Well, good morning. We're here in Senate Hearing Room for our Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting, weekly meeting. It's Wednesday, December 12th, 2018. And we always start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Sophie will join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a house full today. We have -- nobody signed up for public comment this morning. We have two presentations. We're going to take our Court Care Program update with Diane Morris. Diane, if you want to come forward, and I believe Andrea is with you.
Yes.
Great. And give us our Court Care Program update this morning. Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have a PowerPoint?
No.
Why don't we just go over to this side?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I haven't been here with you before, so.
That's okay.
It's a pleasure. I'm Diane Morris. I'm the Trial Court Administrator for the Marion County Circuit Court.
I'm Andrea Riley. I'm the Administrative Analyst and the Court Liaison on the Court Care Board.
Andrea, if you can just pull that mic just a little closer to you, too. So, thank you.
So, we just want to spend a few minutes to give you an update on the Court Care Program. Court Care is a program that allows people who have any sort of business with the court that need childcare to have free childcare at the Y while they're engaged in their court activity or their court case. We found this to be a need because there are -- people were bringing lots of kids to court and they were in inappropriate settings for children. And so, it started with a grassroots, donation-oriented effort to bring money together for the program. Last legislative session, Polk County and Marion County were granted $200,000 for the biennium to start Court Care programs, and we added that to our private donations. And in September of 2017, started our Court Care Program at the YMCA right here next to the courthouse. It's been very successful, and I want to have Andrea tell you some details about it.
Yeah, we really lucked out getting to use the facilities at the YMCA. They had recently closed their childcare, and so there was rooms available and supplies, and it really helped with our startup costs. And so, we opened in September of 2017. One of the things that we've really seen at the courts is, you know, we have kids sleeping on the benches in our hallways. We have parents that have to bring their kids to meet with the facilitators, and they often overhear really traumatic stories from their own parents, but also other people. And so, this drop in care has really given us something that we can offer to customers to remove that barrier for them getting access to our services. Over at the Y, the kids are taught healthy food lessons. They're provided with lunch and snacks. They are given clean clothes to take home if they need. When they leave, they get a stuffed animal, or a toothbrush, or books. Most of the kids over there are three years and under, but we do take kids all the way up to 12, but they're in school most of the time. We've really been relying on our community partners to help us spread the word. The DHS caseworkers have been huge, the Center for Hope and Safety, the District Attorney's Victims Assistance, and then our own court staff, judges, and Treatment Court Coordinators to get the word out so that we can have those kids dropped off before they ever even step foot in the courthouse. The Court Care has proven to work. Every month, our numbers seem to go up, up, up. In the first month, there was about 17 times that Court Care was used, and then just last October, a couple months ago, Court Care was used 142 times in the month. So, the growth is really proving the success of the program. And at the court, we have absolutely seen a decline in the amount of kids that are in our hallways. So, I think it's a win all around.
So, our challenge is coming up on the end of the biennium in June of 2019 will be to see whether there will be additional funding from the legislature. We continue to try to gather private donations through fundraising efforts. It's a program that we would really like to see continue, and we just need to secure the resources to do that.
Any questions? I do have a question, right? About the funding, is there something in the budget over there now, in the governor's budget, or does somebody have a bill to try to secure that funding, Diane, that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. It was someone in Polk County who started this effort, and I expect he would go through the same process to try to show the success of it. We will be presenting statistics and showing the value of the program, so I would expect there's a placeholder of some sort.
Okay. John?
Mr. Chair, as you know, I'm a member of the YMCA Board of Directors, and I think this is a great example of why the Y is such an important institution for our community. They do great work with kids, and we're really proud of it. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Chair, any comments?
No, I don't have -- certainly, I like the sound of it, and if it's Andrea, I like what you said, how it works. I'm thinking, what can we do to help other than fund it ourselves, and so many of these grant programs end up that way. But I'm certain we can help with any legislative effort you're planning, and would be happy to.
Thank you. We really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Diane, we just had our Public Safety Coordinating Council yesterday and adopted agenda items. What we might want to do is get this into our public safety agenda.
Okay.
So that the council members are all aware of it, and we can all be on the same page. So, if you can send something over to HP and we'll get that.
Yes. I will do that. Thank you for that.
Try to get that on the agenda when we're educating legislators here in January. I think it's the 19th.
Okay.
That we're over there. But I'll get you the information when we're going to go do that.
I'll call in today.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you all.
Thanks for your service. Appreciate it. Okay, now for the --
Fun stuff.
Yeah, the prime time, right? Everybody gets to see their smiles on TV this morning. So, we're going to go to the Student Recycled Art Calendar Awards, and Bailey and Reed are here, I believe, to help us with those presentations. And Reed is the Recycling Coordinator from the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association, and of course, our own Bailey Ping. If you -- for those of you in the audience, or those of you watching, if you haven't taken our Master Recycling Program, I was part of the class back in 2014 or 15, and Bailey, that was really eye-opening. I'm sure things have changed since then. And I finally got enough hours to get actually my Master Recycling Certificate, so thank you for encouraging me and helping me through that. And welcome this morning. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's great to be back, and this is always one of our favorite events of the year. And I would like to also thank all the parents and the students for taking time off their schedules to be able to be here this morning with us. And in particular, I'd like to thank the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Hallers Association, who has played a role in this, has been a partnership for probably 20-plus years now. And this year, the garbage and recycling haulers really stepped up and took on a much larger role in all the organization of this calendar and the production of it. So, thank you very much. I look forward to recognizing the kids that are here, and I'll turn it over to Reed.
Yes. Commissioners, good morning. Thank you again for having us. And thank you from Marion County Environmental Services, the teachers, the students, students here and not here. It's been wonderful to look through all of the art that we received. It's really inspiring to see everybody's thoughts on what it means to be green. And this year, that was the theme of this calendar, what it means to be green. It really shows us that there is small actions and large actions. And I spend a lot of time presenting about how to recycle right in Marion County. That's one of my main roles. And just last night, I was at a Neighborhood Association meeting, and I always ask them, what's the best way to educate people? And they always say, go into the schools and teach the students how to recycle, and they can bring it home. Well, I do go into the schools quite often, and I will be doing so more in the future. But I've learned that the students are great recyclers. I try and give them trick questions, and they already know the answers, and they're really passionate about the environment. And that's really what we're seeing in this art. And I think, if anything, that I think we can learn a lot, both through their art and through their words and actions. Their questions are inspired and educated. So, I think it is a good way to go into the schools and educate them even further, because they are the future, and it's clear. That's all I wanted to say. The calendar has been a wonderful project that I got to work on. As Bailey said, this was the first year that we took over the calendar. I got to design it. I got to use the art in the calendar, and it was a fantastic time. Sad to see it go, but now we can start presenting the winners of the calendars. So, I've created a PowerPoint. We will have a certificate that we'll be presenting, and as you can see, the artwork on the presentation as we go through the slides. So.
You want us to come down there? Are we going to bring the kids up? You want us to come down there? Yep. Right.
Yeah, you don't mind coming down. We can call the kids up with each month's art.
Perfect. Yeah, so we'll start with January 2019. And this is the artwork.
Green lights on. There we go. So, our first -- are you going to go through these, or you want me to go? You're going to announce them, or you want me to announce them?
You can announce the name.
So, our first one, here, Sam, you can hold that, because you're better at holding them. Yeah, exactly. Our first one is Coley Addison Elmore, who is for the Sprague High School, 10th grade, right? You got it up there on the slide. And how do I say his name? Is it Coley? Coley. Congratulations, Coley. Thank you. And there's your -- wow, look at that.
Where are they going to stand, over there?
Yeah.
Or over there.
And Sam, why don't we come up here so they can get the Marion County logo behind their -- let's take another picture. There we go. So, we know where we're at.
Alrighty, so moving on to February.
Bailey's got the plaque there for February.
And this is Nikki Evans, the 10th grader from Sprague High School.
Is Nikki with us this morning?
She's not here, unfortunately.
Okay. Another Sprague.
Yes. March.
Yeah. Yeah. Is it Koshi? Koshi? Did I say your name right?
Koshin.
Koshin. And Koshin, what were you thinking about when you drew your artwork that's up there?
I was thinking about what I could do for recycling.
I see a windmill up there. Bicycle. Do you ride a bicycle? Good. So is the Commissioner. He likes to ride bicycles. You could tell. What? Here, here.
In the middle of her face.
Yeah, he needs to respond to the crack comments that I make about him. Yeah. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, for April. You want to announce this one, Sam?
Well, I would say Eliana Rivera.
Eliana? Did we get that right? See? You're good at this.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, so what it means to be green. And so, tell us something about what you were thinking when you drew this artwork. Cactus.
I was just trying to do a simple way to show everyone how to be green.
You've got a lot of flowers, and there's a bird in there. So, you think about planting things that would grow.
Yeah.
So, what happens when we plant trees? What's that do for us to help us be green?
Be able to help the environment, so better air and stuff.
Great. And then I see a milk carton in there. So, buying milk in plastic jugs versus cartons, right? Because the plastic can be recycled and the cartons cannot. Anything else? All right, all right. Okay. Okay, we got May. I can say this one. Emerson Parker, right? Sixth grade, Sublimity. Oh, you should have announced that one. That's your hometown. Yeah. Is Emerson here?
I have a brother.
Yeah, he could have ridden in with the Commissioner. No Emerson this morning. Okay. Well, let's see what Emerson -- go back. What did Emerson, sixth grade? All right. Recycle, reduce, reuse. So, that's the thing I always try to educate people on, the three Rs, right? Is reduce first, reuse, and then recycle. We always think of recycling, but we forget the first two sometimes. Okay, let's go on to the next one. This is June. You want to do June?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Patrick Pierce, from Early College High.
There's Patrick. Congratulations, Patrick. Thank you. Yeah.
Would you, Patrick, could you -- I'll just give you this microphone. Tell us what you've drawn here and what you want to convey.
So, in my opinion, heroes would always be a characteristic or a staple of recycling because it helps save the environment. So, using heroes to promote recycling is a good way to promote it.
And you're a hero. All right. Come on, step right back here.
Would you? Was that supposed to be Commissioner Cameron from the back by any chance? I'm just curious. Just coincidental.
Kind of looks like I just got off a bicycle, doesn't it? Okay, for July. The sun's coming out. Look at that, in July. Well, we would need that today, don't we? We need some rain. So, we have Isla Lute. Is it Isla? Or did I say that right, Isla?
No.
Isla. I'm -- you need to have him. He's better at it than me. Congratulations.
I drew a person and two bunnies. Like, a person recycling, and the bunnies are composting and putting the trash in the trash can.
Pretty nice. Come and join us, Isla. Right here, we'll get your picture right between us.
Right here. Right over here. Maybe we need -- can we bend?
We might need to.
I love that one because I see the sun coming. Look forward to July. Okay, August. And the trees are in bloom. August is Lauren Haynes, 12th grade from Sprague High School. Congratulations, Lauren. Yeah, tell us a little bit about what your picture means.
So, I understood that, like, trees are a very important symbol of nature, I think, and being green. And I decided to make the root systems be the methods of helping out because a tree is supported by its root systems. And if we are going to make a change, we all have to do many different things and do our own part if we are to make this world a better place environmentally. Yeah.
Wow, that's great. And the more trees that we can plant and potentially harvest will sequester carbon, right? Just think about in your house, how much carbon is sequestered in the lumber that's there. It's a good point. Yeah.
Okay, we have Adeline Garcia Hernandez from Washington Elementary.
For September. Adeline's not here. Okay.
Bailey, do you know Washington Elementary, Woodburn, where? Wonderful. Yeah. All the people I'd like to meet won't come.
Yeah. I don't know. It's all the places you've lived.
Wait, look at I.
Yes, yes, as you can.
I don't know quite how to say it. Samantha Bree.
Samantha, congratulations. Thank you.
Samantha, she's 11th grade from Sprague High School. Would you tell us what you've done with your drawing?
Well, I know everybody likes some kind of superhero, so I thought, why don't I draw like a recycling superhero?
That's a good one. Come and join us for a picture. So, was this supposed to be Commissioner Cameron, too? I'm seeing a theme starting.
Congratulations. And I'm so glad that my fellow Commissioner thinks I'm a superhero. What do you think, huh? Have somebody you work with thinks I'm a superhero?
Absolutely.
Okay, Guadalupe Hernandez, 9th grade from Early College High. Okay, Guadalupe is not here. What do we have? Ways to Go Green on a Tree?
No, it's a beanstalk.
Oh, oh, like the Green Giant. Right. Cloth bags, water bottles, and compost bin. That's great. Okay. So, we'll give that one back to Bailey. Oh, you're going to make -- okay. Is it Lila Tulas? Tullos? Or Leila? Leila?
12th grader from Sprague High School.
Yeah, well, Sprague is like well-represented. Tell us -- wow, this is wonderful. Tell us a little bit about your photo, what you were thinking.
I was thinking that everyone has the chance to change the environment, and it starts with one person. So, I put the hands to include people planting and making sure that they're taking care of the environment.
Great. So, each one of us has the opportunity.
That's a good one. Lila, come and join us. Getting through the air. The next is Anderson Webb, a 4th grader from Liberty Elementary. He's coming right up, Anderson. Can you tell us what you've drawn here?
I just thought of like, just like the forest and how it's clean and how it, yeah.
Yeah, it looks good. It says, need to keep the environment clean, and that's certainly true.
What kind of birds are those that you drew? Do you know? What were you thinking?
Seagulls.
Seagulls. Okay.
And this is supposed to say January 2020. We do two Januaries in this calendar, so.
So, January 2020. Oh, so.
Yeah.
So, this is January 2020.
No, the last one was. So, this is the grand prize winner, the cover page.
So, this is the cover page. This is on the front of the calendar.
That's correct.
Ethan Pulley, a 10th grader from Sprague High School. Ethan, congratulations.
Yeah.
The cover. So, yeah, tell us what you were thinking when you drew this.
My bike might be lost in there, Kevin. I'm just curious.
I just wanted to show that, like, the earth is in your hands, and like, to see pretty views like this, you got to reduce, like, all, like, the waste in the world. So, we have to, like, reduce, reuse, and recycle, like, to get these views. I don't know. To like, see beautiful mountain ranges inside.
So, do you snowboard?
Um, no, I ski.
You ski?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
There's still skiers that are young in the world, huh? Good.
Yes.
Well, it depends. Wakeboarding's okay for me, but snowboarding, I don't know if I could do that. So, I have a question, though. Commissioner used to be in a business. Is that actually a garbage truck dumping all the leftover waste and garbage?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this is serious. One of the things you may want to do, because you see that there, is take a tour of the MRF, which is the waste. And two things we do here, and we can share a little bit about -- let's get the picture, and then we can talk just a little bit about how important what all the students did here today. So, why don't you stand over here? And I think she's going to get a group photo, so.
And we do want to represent our teacher from Sprague, that brought all these students and the wonderful art. So, if she could come up with her students? Congratulations, and thank you so much.
If you are a student of Mrs. Tolle, please come up here, and we'll get a group picture with you. We're trying to take as many pictures of you as we can, if that's possible. Getting really close. Oh, like, shoulder to shoulder.
Perfect.
And actually, your window. Perfect. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect. And then, this group, you don't like going back over there for a group photo. Did you want to chat?
Yes, she needs to.
She can chat while you're taking that photo, maybe.
Oh, sure.
You can squeeze in over there so she can get a group photo. Or you want us to move over so she can -- yeah, let's stand over here so she can get -- well.
You might.
Yeah. I may get out of the way.
You can keep chatting. I'll just walk by.
All right. My name is Connie Tolland, and Reed asked me a few questions, so I think I'll just address those and let you know. I've been with Salem Kaiser for 17 years, nine of those at McNary, and now eight at Sprague. So, this has been a wonderful contest for us. We've had a number of winners over the years, and it's -- we like to do it because it's always such an inspiring theme, you know, what it means to be green. Every year, it just gives us great ideas, and like, you know, it starts young, like Reed was saying. And so, I've been really excited to see what the kids have come up with throughout the years. Also, it's really fun for kids to have what I would call a professional experience in the arts, because basically, they're working for a client, just like they would if they were an illustrator in a design company. And so, the client gives specifications, and they're able to think very independently about directions they want to go. So, it's a wonderful theme. It's a great pre-professional experience. Looks wonderful on a college resume, and gives them a chance to go get some wonderful art supplies if they're winners. And also, I wanted to tell you what we use the money for. We use it for supplies in the classes and also to fund field trips for art students. So, that's why we love this contest.
And thank you again.
How about we -- I see a lot of parents want to take some pictures, too. So, do you have any more? A couple more, then we'll invite you to come up, and you can take a picture of the group or your child.
Reed, you want a photo? Bailey, you want a photo?
Let you organize what you want. Let you organize what you want.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
And it was nice meeting all of you.
So we started to talk a little bit about how important things are, what you, what you just did. And the three Rs, you know, reducing obviously, and then reusing, and then recycling. So that the, and I was thinking of Ethan when I was starting to talk about this. Ethan, one of the things that you might want to do is, and we can set this up for you, is take a tour of our Waste to Energy Facility. We're the only county in Oregon, we're the only one on the West Coast, I believe, that actually after we recycle everything, what's left in that dump truck that you drew on that picture, goes over to our MRF first and would actually be more things are taken out of that. In fact, one of the guys that runs our environmental services is sitting right behind you, if you look over your left shoulder there. Brian, he could, he could do this tour. And then from that MRF, the garbage actually goes across the freeway over to the burner. And that burner, that, that Waste to Energy Facility generates enough electricity to power the city of Woodburn. So we're, we're the only place in Oregon that does that. And we have about 8% of the leftover is ash, 8 or 9% of it. And that ash goes down to Coffin Butte, which is the dump in, of the landfill in Corvallis. And they use that for the daily cover because they have to use dirt or something to cover every day to keep birds and all that other stuff compacted. So 100% of what we, we end up with in our garbage here in Marion County is getting used in some way, either for electricity or for daily cover. So we have one of the most advanced programs in Oregon, obviously, and our recycle rates are really high as well. But we have some challenges ahead of us. That Waste to Energy Facility is almost full, a lot of people are coming to Marion County and we've got growth. And so by reducing and reusing, that will help, and recycling, that will help us keep up with that. Sam, you, you're the expert on that.
Well, you know, you must have listened to me often enough, but he had it almost complete. The one thing he, well, I want you to be perfect.
I know you do.
The one thing he left out is also, as a side benefit, we, after the garbage is burned, we extract just about all of the remaining metal, especially the ferrous materials with magnets and even some aluminum and copper. So I use the term, and Kevin did a good job of describing system. We have the most comprehensive solid waste system in Oregon and probably United States, let's say the world. So I'm quite proud of it. We're going to be, we're gonna be essentially giving this talk to the Salem City Council on Monday night. They don't know as much about our garbage system as you do, so we have a good opportunity to explain it to more people. I'm very proud of the system, I will say. It costs something to do all that, but we do so many things for the environment by our system that it's worth it.
So thank you all for being here. I know the students are really happy because they got to miss a little bit of school. Parents, thank you for your support in the students and in our school system, so have a great morning. Thank you. We're gonna take a recess for five minutes, Tron.
Okay, welcome back. We are here returning to our board session on Wednesday, December 12th, in the Senate Hearing Room. We just finished with the presentation for the student recycled art calendars, which is really good. See all those students having a great time and educating us as well as everybody else with their artwork. We are gonna move on to the consent calendar. Commissioner, if you would like to.
Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. Number of items this morning, the first consent is usually a pretty routine matter, administrative. First one's kind of a big deal, but it's on the consent calendar, read it like it is. Approve the appointment of Brian S. Nicholas as the Marion County Public Works Director and the Marion County Emergency Management Director with an effective date of December 17th, 2018. In Public Works, receive notice of a hearings officer's decision approving Flood Plane Case 18003, Zalinski Living Trust and Windsor Island Company LLC. From the Tax Office, approve a property tax refund in the amount of $59,338.92 to Nordstrom Incorporated. Approve a property tax refund in the amount of $16,994.40 to Summit Salem LLC. Approve a property tax refund in the amount of $23,001.63 to T-Mobile USA Incorporated. And approve a property tax refund in the amount of $39,961.47 to King Plaza of Portland LLC. In the Treasurer's Office, approve the distribution of Oregon State Forestry Timber Revenue as per O.R.S. Chapter 530 in the amount of $3,492,773.34. And I just, one little comment, that does indicate more activity in our state forests, in Marion County particularly.
That's good news. Any other, I guess I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? I think, I was just, you know, Nordstrom's gonna, you know, reduce their prices now, but they're not here. They're gone. Okay, any other discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all is in favor of approving the consent calendar, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's done. Somehow my computer went off while we were, didn't touch it for a while. So we'll go on to the first action item. We will now move under, conduct business under the Contract Review Board. Consider approval of an ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Marion County Code 3.25. Camber and Jeff White, looks like Camber. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Camber Schlag. I am the Contracts and Procurement Manager within the Finance Department. And I am here before you today to request the approval of the modifications to our Marion County Public Contracting Rules. The Finance Department, along with legal counsel, held one work session with the Chief Administrative Officer and the Deputy Administrative Officer, and we held a second work session with the Board of Commissioners, you all, just a few weeks ago, going over the modifications that we are requesting. Some of those major modifications are the delegation of authority. Under Section 10-0170, we have added a clarifying definition of the word designee, which shall mean Deputy Director or Division Director may authorize contracts and IGA's up to 50,000. We have increased the amendment amount to 25% from 20%. And under Section 20-0265, under Small Procurements, we are requesting to increase the county's small procurement threshold from $5,000 to $10,000. This follows the state of Oregon limits as long, as well as many other counties throughout Oregon. We are requesting the personal increase, personal services limit to be increased from 20,000 to 30,000. We are requesting the intermediate procurement level to be verbal quotes from 10,000 to 25,000. And then the written quote would be from 25,000 to 100,000. We have added a new exemption for memberships and professional associations. This allows for county staff to join memberships and professional associations without a competitive process. We have also clarified and added to an A&E exemption for business services facilities and for our Public Works Department. This will allow them to direct appoint an architect engineer for up to 100,000. It also changes the intermediate threshold from 100,000 to 200,000. We also took the opportunity to correct some grammatical errors that we had within our rules that we discovered. Punctuation, capitalization, those kinds of items. Do you have any questions for me this morning?
John, any questions? No?
No.
Commissioner?
No. No, I think, Camber, we've, we've been through this quite in detail on a couple occasions, so I don't have any questions. I really appreciate the, the changes that's gonna streamline a few things for us that will help us serve the public in, in a more efficient way. So thank you and Jeff for your team's efforts on this.
Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance and ask you to read it by title only twice. It does declare emergency, it doesn't say it in the title, but I'm told it's in the body.
It's, it's actually not in the body. So I think you could.
Just add it?
Add this by motion and then it has to be amended, you know, later. But we do need to have a provision in the body of the, of the ordinance that, or in the order that it be, that this is going to be adopted by emergency for the health, safety, and welfare of the county. And then, and then it does need to have by emergency in the title.
Okay.
So are we gonna do that just verbally right now?
I think you can add that verbally and then make the changes later and then sign it.
So do you want to, do you want to write out that language for us to read?
Yes.
And where we would insert that?
Yes.
Jane, if you could just make the motion, I'll, I'll make it mine.
Okay, so I think under Section 1 of Findings, you would add a last sentence that says the board has further determined that this ordinance shall be adopted by emergency procedure for the necess, for, as it is necessary for the preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
All right, my motion then is to read, to read this by title only twice, including the language that Jane's just given us, and then we'll vote on it.
Okay, so we, and I'll second the motion and read by title only twice. An ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Marion County Code Chapter 3.25 and declaring an emergency. And an ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Marion County Code Chapter 3.25 and declaring an emergency.
And just to add one thing, declaring an emergency and it will therefore be in effect immediately.
That was understood, but fine.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion that we approve the ordinance with the changes that have been discussed.
I'll second the motion. Did we vote on the first?
I meant to, did we?
Did we vote on the emergency?
Just say we didn't do it again then. No, we, we did. Yes, we're square to here.
Okay, we're square.
Now we approve the ordinance, excuse me.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion to approve the ordinance.
With the changes that have been discussed.
With the changes that have been discussed and declaring an emergency, and I'll second the motion. All those, a further discussion on the motion? Are we clear, counsel?
Yes.
Okay.
Most of us, but you.
Okay, we know what we're trying to do here, I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way. Okay. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Camber. And that was, I did, I did make a note when we started that we were doing that business under the Contact, Contract Review Board. I did make that notice. So we will close the Contract Review Board's business today. And we had a notice of a public hearing at 9:30 a.m., so it is now nine, almost 9:49 a.m., so we can go ahead and open a public hearing under Finance, a public hearing to consider the transfer of tax foreclosed properties, tax ID R37284 and tax ID R100485 from Marion County to the City of Jefferson. Jeff, good morning.
Good morning. Jeff White, Chief Financial Officer for Marion County. As you are aware, we've discussed proposed purchase from the City of Jefferson a couple of times at management update on these two pieces of property. The board made the decision to accept the offers by the City of Jefferson. By statute, it's required that as we're selling to another government entity, that we hold a public hearing to give the public an opportunity to have some input on that decision. The notice was posted and ran in the Salem Statesman Journal on December 3rd and December 10th. It doesn't look like there is anyone here to speak to this.
Yeah, we have nobody signed up for the public hearing, nobody's here, so. John, you wanna, did you want to make some comments?
You might want to let the public know what we're transferring.
Thank you.
Suggest the same.
There is a 1.29 acre parcel in the City of Jefferson on the 100 blocks South Fifth Street. This piece of property has been designated by the state as a forested wetlands. Over the last 30 years at least, several developers have purchased that property to try to develop it and have not been allowed to do so because of the designation of the forested wetland. It fell into foreclosure through the non-payment of taxes. So the county now owns it. There is, in all of our efforts, literally nothing that we can do with this property. It is unlikely that anybody would purchase it again since it's non-developable. The City of Jefferson would like to put a boardwalk through it. They've been working with the state to make it kind of a wetland park area. In addition, they need to take care of some, it's become a bit of a problem property with transient folks in there and Turkey's actually causing some problems. So the city would like the property to take care of all those and end up with a nice little wetland kind of park. The second piece of property is just slightly under a quarter acre on Zero South Main Street in Jefferson. This area used to be a gas station. The buildings have been removed, it's a vacant lot now at this point. There is some DEQ required action on this property because of the previous gas tanks and buildings that were there. DEQ is prepared to do a limited study. The City of Jefferson would like to turn this into a welcome kiosk area, so kind of at the front of there as you come into the city. It, it also would likely be undevelopable. If we were going to try to sell it to another party, if there was an interest, DEQ would have to do some more extensive work on what kind of ground could be moved or not. At this point, again, it appears to be the likely best use for this property. Does that answer any questions?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that there's, that, for those that are watching, that there's a price. They are paying $5,000 for the wetlands and $10,000 for the, the old gas station place. And then the other thing, I want to just, for the record, declare and that we did tour this, we did tour the one property, the, the one where the gas station is.
Kiosk area.
The kiosk area with the, some of the city council and the mayor at that time, was that a year and a half ago? And they expressed to us their desire at that point in time to, to turn this property into something that would be a real lift for the city. So we did tour it, for the record, we've seen it, and I don't think that that causes any problems on this, but.
If I, if I could, just, just so everybody understands, our preference and desire, what we always try to do is get these properties returned to private hands on the tax rolls. It really looked in this case, looks in this case, that that isn't feasible. So as a fallback, to at least have a use for these properties would be beneficial to the community of Jefferson. I think this is a good answer. And at least, at least have the, have it be productive properties. So Chair Cameron, I don't, go ahead.
I make just two more quick comments. Just for clarification, the, the wetland property, you'll, you have the deed before you and that will transfer as soon as they give us the check. The property with the former gas station will be a while.
Right.
DEQ needs to do some other studies before you'll end up seeing the deed on that piece. And I forgot my other comments, so that'll have to.
All right, I think I do remember those. So Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing and accept, accept the recommendation for the board commissioner to accept the offer made by the City of Jefferson.
I'll second that motion. Further discussion? Just the, the only thing I would make a comment, I think the money will be deposited to the tax title fund and will be dispersed by the racial, to the other taxing districts as well, schools, et cetera.
Remember my other comment. Statutorily. Statutorily, in case anybody thought the City of Jefferson might get this land inexpensively and turn around, resell it, they cannot. They're required to maintain it as as property in public use for at least twenty years. So it protects us not getting the full value of the property and the city gaining something there. It protects us.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have motion second. Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, so that concludes our business for the day. The chair will read the calendar from where we're gonna be the next... Wow, isn't it like holiday season? I thought this calendar would shrink. No wonder I'm so tired this morning. Tomorrow at seven thirty, we have the Kaiser, the thirteenth on Thursday, seven thirty, the Kaiser Marion County Meeting, Sherry's Restaurant on four, nine, nine, eight, River Road Kaiser. Tomorrow, the thirteenth, Thursday at one thirty, Marion County Justice Reinvestment Council here in the here on the fifth floor in the Commissioners Boardroom. Tomorrow, the twelve thirteen, Thursday at four o'clock, the Jefferson Public Library. We're just talking about the City of Jefferson. Jefferson Public Library Grand Opening located at one five, zero, North Second Street in Jefferson. Tomorrow, Thursday at six P.M., the thirteenth, reception for outgoing Almsville City Council members, Chester's Bridges Memorial Community Center at five 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 Main Street, Almsville. Twelve seventeenth on Monday at eight thirty a.m., a calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Monday, the seventeenth at nine a.m., Management Update, Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Monday, the seventeenth at six P.M., a joint work session with Salem and Marion County regarding waste management, which you referred to earlier today, Commissioner. City of Council, City of Salem Council Chambers at five 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 Liberty Street. Is there a reason that all the government, you know, Almsville, five five five, we're at five five five, and the city of Salem's at five five five? Is it significance to that address?
Mark of the devil, I think.
I think, something like that.
Yeah, we are the devil.
Yeah. Shhh. Okay, so that's at the City Council Chambers on Monday at six o'clock. That'll be an educational opportunity. Twelve eighteen, Tuesday at seven thirty a.m., Healthcare in the Community Forum at Ross Fresh Market Event Center. Eleven thirty, Wallace Road Northwest, Salem. Tuesday, the eighteenth at ten a.m., Marion County Reentry Initiative and Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Lead Planning Meeting in the Mount Angel Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Tuesday at eleven thirty, Board of Commissioners Holiday Party in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here in this building. Tuesday at one P.M., Housing Update, Mount Angel Conference Room here on the fifth floor. And Wednesday, the nineteenth, we're back here for our weekly board session.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
I'll think about it. Yeah, yes, you may.
Since I wasn't here last week to take part in the Christmas greeting by the board and the staff, I would like to do that today to wish all Marion County residents and particularly our staff happy holidays and take care. Have fun over the holidays, but don't go crazy. I won't be here next week either.
So who's gonna get me something, John? We have a Christmas party. You're not getting me anything?
No. But I did wear my Christmas tie today.
So did I.
I kinda too.
So happy holidays to everyone in Marion County, but particularly to all of our staff who make this county operate.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We, we are, we are blessed to have great people and citizens that support us and, and it is, it is really good. So, but I feel like we're going to Christmas vacation. You're going on Christmas vacation. I think it's gonna be like, kinda like the movie Christmas Vacation from what you described, where you're going.
We'll be in charge. It's okay.
Yeah. It'll be Christmas vacation back here. Oh.
I do have something.
Nobody here to harass you.
Keep us in line.
Yes.
No junior high school teachers. Actually, I think Janet is back next week. Yeah.
I have something to say.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I should leave it with John's happy notes, but I, since we've got done early, I note that there's a ceremony in Woodburn at eleven thirty, I believe, commemorating the tenth anniversary of the Woodburn bombing, one that troubled us all. I know it affected our deputies and certainly people in Woodburn. I had a connection with West Coast Bank at that time, so it struck close with people that I specifically cared about. Anyway, I'm gonna try.
You're gonna get up there?
Yeah, another example how time goes, but.
Ten years.
Yeah, I don't know if this is a hurt that quite heals. It's a bad one.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it just seems like yesterday. Those things don't, don't.
Anyway, I'm gonna try.
What else? We got? Well, we had an interesting work session yesterday. We had a lot of people in the room on the water issue. That's
I don't know if I heard what I wanted to there. I'm glad we get a chance maybe to talk about. I wanted, and Tom Hoag on our staff asked the questions I wanted answered, and either it was language I couldn't understand or those answers didn't come. Did you get it different than I did?
Well, no, we didn't get the answers that we were, or we didn't get, I don't even think the questions really got asked that that should have been, but I don't know that Army Corps has the answers to the questions that, that we need. I mean, they're, they're doing, what I walked away from is.
I gotta interrupt you. We're not laying this out, what the subject was. Could you, it was about water allocation from, from the Corps of Engineers?
Yeah, there's, and I think, I think a really good point was that there's four projects going on that are spinning. There's these plates. It's like, you know the clown that spins the plates in the air? There's like four of these plates being spun in the air right now. And they all evolve around water and Army Corps and, and the Army Corps has something to do with them all. Number one is the the project up there that we've been talking about a lot, about when the lake gets drained and the, the water mixing tower that they're gonna install, that's, that's still going on. That wasn't the subject yesterday. Number two is the water, which we were talking about yesterday, which is the water storage reallocation. The work session yesterday was called Ag and Municipal Water Supplies. And this is the negotiations that has happened, and from what we found out yesterday, it's too late to make public comment on that particular issue. It's gonna be coming out in a dra, a draft, the final draft is gonna go to the the Colonel or whatever it was, the general at Army Corps, signed off by, I think, next summer and then go to Congress. And so our, what we learned yesterday on this water storage reallocation, our only avenue to make comments or to have it adjusted is through our congressional delegation, of which Congressman Schrader was represented there yesterday. Was Fritz there?
No.
Fritz was not there. So obviously, and our, our federal lobbyists were there, CFM representatives from there were there. Number, number two, or number three is the Danielle had him, I added the, I added the third, so there's three. Number, number three is they're now embarking on a re-up of the buy-up, buy-up, which was, was finalized in two thousand eight. So that's the biological opinion on the fish and the water with the fish. That's being redone, so watch out because that's gonna come at us with probably more important on the fish. And then the fourth one, I can't remember. There was, there was the... Jane, you were in the room. Do you remember?
I was, I thought the fourth one was kind of tied into the buy-up. It was like a two-parter, but I could be wrong on that.
Oh, it was the EIS, the whole, it was the whole EIS of the Willamette Basin, the Environmental Impact Study of the Willamette Basin and Army Corps Water Storage, et cetera. So, so there's, there's four things that, that are being spun on plate. So you've got the EIS, that's, that's twenty-year project or whatever, I think they said. And then you've got the the buy-up, and then you've got this reallocation, and then you've got the, the deal. So there's this huge water, I almost called water wars, or, you know, water that were, and, and the average person, and I'm so glad you were there. I saw you taking, you know, many, many notes. But we were, we were getting, we weren't even getting, we weren't even involved.
That was gonna be my comment. The federal agencies love to talk to the federal agencies, and their, and their description of giving public notice, well, we sent you
An email somewhere.
To somewhere. We don't know to who or to when, but I'm sure you should have got it and you should have jumped. And then to say, well, you know, public comments closed, way over that, but they like to talk among themselves, make the decisions without regards to how it even looks like it impacts the local population. This is big stuff that affects us and, and we can't find a voice.
So this buy-up, I mean, I wasn't here because that, that original buy-up was done way before, probably even your time, my time, here. At least we're gonna.
We weren't part of that, I was here, but we were not part of that process.
We've certainly noticed that we wanna be a part of that stuff and get notified. And, and one of the things Barb's gonna go back and do is look and see where follow up with them and see where we were notified. Where was the emails going for this reallocation on storage issue? But, yeah, we didn't, and, and you know, their whole, their whole point that they continue to stress was they, they are gonna reallocate this by percentages. However, they can't guarantee that there's enough water in the, in the system to, to send it down for everybody. The, the concern I have is that they're looking at all this, this reallocation of storage. And they did talk about how climate change could potentially impact the water, but they're not gonna look at their rule curve. They're not gonna change the rule curve based on climate changing and water coming in different forms, not as much snowpack. I think you, you brought up yesterday the fact about, is anybody looking at more storage? And that's totally off of their, that's totally off of their table.
Wouldn't you think you might like some more coming up?
Somehow, some way, we, we, and did you whisper to me, or somebody whispered to me, how's this impact the Columbia River, right? All the water, all the water that's going out to sea, and we're gonna have a water shortage.
I, let's see, I was gonna go.
Oh, and NIP, or.
NIPS.
NIPS or NOAA, NIPS, right?
Marine Fisheries.
Yeah.
And that's what I was gonna bring up, and that's kinda what was brought to me as kind of a dangerous thing. I don't know how the allocation works in terms of really moving water or giving it to somebody, I can imagine. But I've been pushing for this rewrite of the buy-up to give a better look on the original subject, the Detroit Dam drawdown and the cooling towers, and maybe talk about an alternative to that or the the lack of necessity of that. But now, the scary part is they come in and make the NIPS a full partner in the discussions. And, and imagine you're representing Marine Fisheries. What do you say? We want all the water for fish. You know I like fish, but we have to carve out spots for our businesses and farms and cities. Come on.
And it sounded like, if I understood it right, it sounded like they've gone through this whole process on the reallocation, storage, and yet NIPS is the final, like, has to agree to it.
Right.
Right? So they have like veto power.
And then what would they say? Would they possibly want less than they think they could get? Their only concern is that and not the people of Marion County, Oregon? I'm sorry. Jane, you wanna tell us something?
No, I was just seeing, I think another big issue that, that the county has to, I think, learn more about is they were really talking about, they're looking at two different kinds of water. And they're going to change your, the impact of the water rights because they're, they're going to take away, they're going to say a certain kind of water isn't part of your water rights anymore. And that's going to impact the businesses that are, you know, right now have a certain volume of water. They're gonna get less of it because of what the Corps is proposing. And I think that's something we really need to look at.
Yeah, and then there's the state. The state, the whole state issue is, is involved, and they kept referring to the state and I don't know. We talked about this yesterday in follow-up. We had a meeting with CFM and Barb, Barb was in the meeting and Tom and Danielle following up with it. It's like, okay, now where do we go?
It's, I wasn't there. Did they have anywhere to go?
Well, no, we just, we, we talked about making sure that maybe we need to get some technical support help on understanding this issue, so that's kinda where we're gonna review it, have a follow-up meeting.
Our legislative delegation has to help us somehow. So whatever we can do that way. All right, otherwise it was fun.
I think we're good. We've got, what is today? The twelfth? Then we have the nineteenth? And then Christmas, right? So we got one more meeting before Christmas. We will sign off and we are adjourned.